Good morning, everyone. The March 17th, 2021, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers, made possible through the underwriting from the Warren Group. Please note, customers of Cox Communication may view this program in high-definition on Channel 102 and in standard-definition on Channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and the Go Vegas app. The City Council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV Channel 2, Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today’s meeting, please evacuate using the exit to the back of the chambers going out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a fire official or marshal for assistance. And once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it’s safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk up front. Cards are available in the clerk’s office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public-hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city clerk’s staff. And please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between the council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine, but if you do not, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Carol Stimson? She kena glory ministries and remains standing for our pledge. And thank you so much, Reverend.
Good morning. Hello, everyone, and thank you, Mayor and the City Council, for this opportunity. Please bow your head as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you, and thank you for loving us. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council here today. I’m asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved city of Las Vegas. In your most blessed name, I pray, amen.
Amen, and thank you, Reverend. You’re welcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, this certainly is an explosion around me here, balloons and happiness and shame on all of you, but thank you. And it is, I see back here, which I didn’t even know, it’s National Mayor’s Day, but it is also St. Patrick’s Day. And because it’s St. Patrick’s Day and a very meaningful time, I’m going to come down, and Mayor Protem, you’ll be in charge for the bench, I want to address council from down there. Thank you. And just a year ago, March 18th, 2020, one year ago tomorrow, I stood before you to express my deepest concerns about completely shutting down our beloved Las Vegas, its hotels, its businesses, and its schools. The decision by one individual, which required no vote by the Nevada Legislature or any other elected body, promised to cause undue hardship to hundreds of thousands of Nevadans. My plea at the time was to take a more nuanced approach, to enact safety precautions that would enable Las Vegas to continue to function. A full year later, we see some states which took this moderate approach, like more populous Florida and Texas, for example, actually realized a lower death count per 100,000 than did some states with prolonged total shutdowns, like Michigan, New York, and Nevada, and that’s according to Statista.com, March 8th, 2021. Nevadans, many of whom still have not been able to get through to the state’s unemployment office to receive funds owed to them, suffered tremendously. Many of our small businesses and even some of our larger ones were forced to close up, to shutter their doors. And our children have suffered immeasurably. As I pleaded for moderation, some individuals, especially some certain newscasters, took great issue with my stance to enact reasonable safety precautions and entrust Nevadans and tourists to make responsible decisions. I’d like to recall what I did say on March 18th, just a year ago, in response to the governor’s shutdown directive, and I quote this exactly: “It has been my intent, as the mayor of this great city of Las Vegas, that we would be able to remain open for business, even when realizing that there could have been constraints put upon us to which we would have reasonably adhered. Because not only do I understand, but also because I’m painfully aware and sensitive to the very many who live paycheck to paycheck, I know we and they cannot survive any total shutdown of the economy for any length of time beyond the immediate week or two. So many working in the hospitality industry, more likely in big hotels, but also those mom-and-pop, small privately-owned businesses, these are most definitely at the greatest risk. They cannot survive any lengthy shutdown, and thus my full-out efforts will be focused on keeping as many of our people as possible employed and asking our governor to shorten the projected shutdown.” End quote. That was a year ago. Here we are, a full year later, our businesses are still only operating at 50% capacity, up from a bizarre 35% that was effective until three days ago. Some have not yet been permitted to open at all. Our children are now only returning part-time to public school in a hybrid model, and then only kindergarten through 5th in-person, full-time on April 6th. Tens of thousands of students have missed out on graduation, proms, extracurriculars, sports, scholarship, not to mention a year’s worth of invaluable in-person instruction. In March 2020, when the governor announced, in a quote, and this is a quote, “a courtesy call,” that he was shutting the schools down, I pleaded with him to implement safety measures and mandatory temperature checks instead for all entering the buildings. I was harshly told he was not seeking any input. There is a mantra in some circle that these draconian shutdowns saved lives, and while any one death is beyond heartbreaking, the data shows no consistent correlation in death rates between states with prolonged complete shutdowns like Nevada and those that adopted more moderate safety precautions. In fact, the four states with the highest death rates were the states that adopted stringent shutdown policies. One must also ask, if masks and social distancing are sufficient now to slowing the spread of this virus, would that not have been sufficient a full year ago? What is the rationale for continuing, even at 50% capacity, with other precautions like mask mandates in place in addition to increasing vaccinations? America is the land of the free, but Americans in some states, not all, have been forced to subjugate their freedoms to the will of a single individual seemingly in perpetuity. There is no apparent sunset on emergency powers bestowed to some governors which smacks of tyranny. I am now calling for a return to personal responsibility and personal liberty. Those who do not want to or choose to go out in public places are not forced to do so, just as those who do not want the vaccine are not forced to take them. Those who want to wear a mask, or two or three of them, are not prevented from wearing them. Masks, distancing, frequent hand-washing and sanitation are reasonable measures that health officials assure us truly make a difference. That is following the science. The science has not proven that completely shutting down accomplished anything more than moderate, reasonable precautions. Nevadans and Americans are smart enough to understand what’s at stake and make appropriate choices for themselves and their families. As one caller to my office recently expressed, it is beyond sad and concerning to see Lady Liberty on our Las Vegas Strip wearing a mask. It is the antithesis of what she and America represent, personal freedom. I said this a full year ago tomorrow, and I repeat it again today. The city of Las Vegas will seek ways for people and businesses to advocate for their own lives, make their own choices, create and follow their own destinies, and live being assured they have the right to do so in dignity, earning a livelihood, providing for their families, and even helping others to enjoy those same rights and dignities. Upon these American founding principles, we will continue to stand. Thank you, my dear councilpersons, for this moment. And if you would continue on reading so we don’t lose time, Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Those were, as far as I’m concerned, outstanding remarks. Item number five, public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion as well as the amount of time. Any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Does anyone want to speak on a particular agenda item that has been posted today? Any ecomments? Nothing? Okay, I will close public comment, and we’ll go to item number six for possible action. Any items from the 9:00 a.m. session that the council staff or the applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to future meeting, may be brought forward and act upon at this time. I have three items on my list here. Item number 13, Exclusive Negotiating Agreement, E&amp;A, with Axios Nevada LLC. Staff has asked that be stricken. Item number 18, Ratification of the Commission for the Las Vegas Centennial Funding Allocation for the Production of the Las Vegas Days Rodeo and the Award of $180,000 to the Plaza Hotel and Casino. Staff has asked that be tabled. And item number 46A and B, 200366 SUP-1 and 200366 SDR-1, applicant Golden Entertainment Stratosphere Land, 3.7 acres on the east side of Las Vegas Boulevard, approximately 330 feet south of St. Louis Avenue. The applicant has asked that item be obeyed till April 21st, 2020, and unless there are no other items, that will be my motion, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Will you please vote? And please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mayor Protem. We’ll move on to Agenda Item 7, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the February 17th, 2021, regular City Council meeting. Mayor Protem may have a motion, please.
I’ll move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve the minutes. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. We’ll move on to Agenda 8, and that is Items 8 through 28, with the exception of 13 and 18, on the consent agenda, considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items council wishes brought forward? Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem may have a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I’ll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 8 through 28, except for item 13 and 18.
Thank you. This is motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries unanimously. We’ll move on to Agenda Item 29, Administrative Report by Jorge Serrantes, City Manager, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a New Two-Year Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Las Vegas Police Protective Association, LV, PPA, and the City of Las Vegas, $379,339 general fund, reference to all wards.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jorge Serrantes, City Manager. It’s my pleasure to bring before you, turn it off here, it’s my pleasure to bring before you for your consideration a new two-year collective bargaining agreement with the Las Vegas Police Protective Association. This agreement would cover fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. Fiscal year 21 is actually the current year we’re under. Fiscal year 22 starts July 1st of this year and carries us through to next year. The Police Protective Association represents about 110 of our marshals, which really are our frontline security folks that protect our community at our community centers, at our parks, our municipal courts, and our street right-of-way, and do a great job every day for us. The fiscal impact of this agreement over the two years is $379,339. And Mr. Samora with HR is going to give us the specifics of the agreement.
Thank you, Jorge. Good morning, Mayor Council, members of Mayor Council. Vince Samora, Human Resources Director. As Jorge mentioned, we have approximately 109 members covered by this particular agreement. Our negotiations started on January 7th, 2021, and an agreement was reached after the third meeting, and we concluded those negotiations on February 17th. This is a two-year agreement, as Jorge mentioned, covering fiscal years 21 and 22. As we move to the individual items, we look at wages. In year one, all members will receive a $1,325 one-time cash payment. In year two, Tier 1 marshals will receive a 1.75% COLA, and Tier 2 marshals will receive a 2% COLA. Other economic provisions include increasing the sick leave bonus eligibility period, as well as moving Tier 2 sergeants to the Tier 1 pay scale. In year two, we will eliminate Step 1 of the Tier 2 marshal pay scale, which will provide a higher starting salary range, and we will eliminate and we will add two steps to the top of the Tier 2 marshal pay scale, which provides greater salary potential and brings us closer to parity with other agencies. As Jorge mentioned, the fiscal impact for this item is $379,339. And we would like to recognize the members of the negotiation committee with the PPA. They include Scott Nicholas, who’s the Vice President, Kelly Sweeney, the Director of Employee Relations, Kevin DeRosa, who is one of our marshals, Matthew Long, who is also one of our marshals, and John Burdette, as well. Also like to thank our negotiation team, Rick Hunt, who is the HR Administrator of Employee and Labor Relations, Sue Brown, who is our Deputy Director of HR, and Morgan Davis, who provided all the legal counsel and expertise in this particular area. And lastly, we would like to thank every marshal out there who service our community on a regular basis, being brave and committed to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Samora. We do absolutely echo your praise and thanks for everybody working so diligently on this and time-consuming and just wonderful, and especially our marshals. You’re just the best there is in total law enforcement. Mr. Serrantes, as well. And any comments, questions, other than gratitude? Mayor Protem may have a motion, please.
I will move to approve the two-year collective bargaining agreement between the LV PPA and the City of Las Vegas.
Thank you very much. This is motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. And again, thank you. Move on to Agenda Item 30, Resolutions, R152021, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Second Resolution Adopting a Temporary Trade-In Exchange Program for Certain Alcoholic Beverage Licenses. This is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, Deputy Planning Director, for the record. So before you is the second resolution that will allow certain businesses of alcohol that have alcohol beverage licenses to trade in and exchange those licenses for other alcohol and beverage licenses. We originally had the first resolution, which had about four to five individuals that took advantage of this, and we have renewed interest for it, so we’re bringing this resolution back to you. This resolution will sunset on June 30th, 2021.
Comments, questions? Anyone on Agenda Item 30? Mayor Protem may have a motion, please.
I move for approval of the second resolution adopting a temporary trade-in exchange program for certain alcoholic beverage licenses.
Thank you very much. Please vote, and please post. Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. We’ll move on to Agenda Item 31, Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Adrushan Andy Armenian to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Mr. Armenian sits in a seat designated as the mayor’s appointment, has the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Director for reappointment, is eligible, and he wishes to continue to serve, and so that’s my motion to reappoint Mr. Armenian. Would you please vote and post, please? And is Mr. Armenian here? If you’re out there, you carry you unanimously. Thank you for your service, and we’ll move on to Agenda Item 32, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Sandra Cosgrove to the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Cosgrove serves as Category 6 member, was originally appointed 2014. She is eligible to be reappointed, has the recommendation of the planning director, and wishes to continue serving. Councilwoman Diaz, perhaps? Would you make the motion, please?
It would be a pleasure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and with that, I move to approve the reappointment of Sandra Cosgrove to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Ms. Cosgrove, are you here? And also, if you’re out there, congratulations and thank you for your service. We’ll move on to Agenda Item 33, and Discussion/Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Almedra Johnson toward Ward 1 seat of Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Mr. Eric Fomel occupied one of the Ward 1 seats, and his term is expired. Ms. Johnson is eligible and wishes to serve, and so Councilman Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. I read motion for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve that application. If you’ll vote, please, and post, please. That motion carries unanimously. Also, Ms. Johnson, are you here? And if you’re out there, congratulations and thank you for your offer to serve. Move on to Agenda Item 34, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Felipe Ortiz to the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees. Mr. Ortiz was appointed July 10th of 2013 to fill an unexpired term and reappointed in April of 2017. He’s eligible for reappointment and wishes to continue to serve on this board. Councilwoman Diaz, I understand you’re ready to make this reappointment.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 34.
And there’s motion to approve Mr. Ortiz for this library position. Please vote, please post. And you are here. We thank you so much and appreciate it. You look wonderful. I know you’re not retired, but it sort of feels like that. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to you. We appreciate it. With the new Director of Library, it will be a great help to have the continuation of the history of what’s gone before. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 35, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at Later Meeting. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at Later Meeting. Item numbers 35, 36, Bill’s number 2021-9, 2021-10 will be heard at a later meeting. We’ll move on to new bills. Items number 37 through 40, Bills number 2021-11 through 2021-14 will be heard at Recommending Committee on Monday, April 5th, 2021. City Attorney, would you please read the new bills?
Yes, ma’am. Bill number 2021-11, in ordinance to amend the Symphony Park Design Standards to update and clarify the scope and processes relative to requests for minor deviations and waivers regarding the design standards and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2021-12, in ordinance to amend LVMC Section 19.16.110, subsection P, regarding the termination of special-use permit approvals to clarify the circumstances under which a special-use permit may be voided for failure to keep a related temporary business license in active status or converted to a permanent business license and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2021-13, in ordinance amending LVMC Title 16 to add a new chapter establishing an inspection program for certain non-transient lodging properties, including certain residence hotels, motels, amending various provisions of LVMC Title 6 to provide parallel licensing changes, including a change in the definition of apartment house to include structures with four dwelling units and providing further related matters. Bill number 2021-14, in ordinance to amend LVMC Section 7.32.160 and Section 7.44.40 to update provisions regarding animal cruelty and related penalties and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. New bills, number 2021-11 through 2021-14, are assigned to the April 5, 2021 Recommending Committee Members—Councilman Anthony, Councilman Knutson, and Councilwoman Fiori. If any are so designated or unable to attend, the Clerk's office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. Are you able to be there? Yes, yes. Ma'am Protam, yes. Thank you very much. And so, we are on to Agenda Item 41. Items 41 through 42 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Please note my abstention in item 42 as it pertains to a marijuana-related business and one of my sons involved in that industry. Mayor Protam may have a motion to approve the consent agenda 41 through 42.
So moved.
Thank you. Please vote on Agenda Item 41 and 42, and then please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Items 43 through 43D. 43 is 78755 on the following land-use entitlement project request on 254 acres, southwest corner Bonanza Road and Martin-Luther King Boulevard. 43A, 78755, GPA 1 from C Commercial to LIR Light Industry and Research. 43B, 78755, ZON 1 from C to General Commercial to CM Commercial Industrial. 43C, 78755, SUP 1 for an alternative parking standard. And 43D, 78755, SDR 1 for post 17,056 square foot heavy machinery and equipment rental sales and service facility with a waiver not to orient the building to the corner where such is required. The applicant owner is DFA LLC. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. These are in Ward Five with Councilman Creer in a public hearing, which I declare open as the applicant or representative present.
Yes, Mayor, City Council people. My name is George Rogers, Architect, 6325 South Jones, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes. It's—it's a equipment dealership for equipment that might be used by small contractors or landscapers, and it's really a great use for the corner. We conducted a neighborhood meeting in December, and Councilman Creer's office had attended the meeting, and we had one other attendee. There were no negative comments, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval and the planning commission's recommendation for approval.
Wonderful. This is—anything, Mr. Lowenstein?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Staff finds the proposed land use designation and zoning would be harmonious and compatible with the adjacent properties to the east and the west. Staff concurs with the provided parking study and supports the alternate parking demand—alternate parking standard, and the requested waiver not to orient the building to the corner will improve onsite maneuvering of semi-trucks and heavy equipment, lessening the impact on neighboring properties. For those reasons, staff has recommended approval of all applications. Thank you.
And can you show us on the map where are the entries onto the property, or are they all low—no barrier? Where does the equipment get in and get out? On Bonanza?
There—
On MLK?
Yes, Mayor. There are two driveways, one on Bonanza and one on Martin Luther King. Obviously, there's—a restriction on Martin Luther King because of the center median, but the equipment comes in for display there, and—as well as patrons and the employees. And it's displayed in front of the building. In fact, it will be displayed to Bonanza and to Martin Luther King.
So as they come in, as the equipment comes in off of Martin Luther King, is there a recess there, much like the buses have? Isn't that a two-lane road going south?
Madam Mayor, yes, there's two, actually three. I think there's three lanes, and there's a turnpocket onto the US 95 on the southern portion of Martin Luther King. On both of those roadways, there are medians, so they're right in, right out on both of those points of ingress and egress.
But to slow down traffic, or if there's a backup going into the property, is there or can there be a—I just really turn this to Councilman Creer. It's your area, and just that's my concern, because Martin Luther King's become extremely active, and I can see with the median also there, unless there's a pullout or something. But I don't know. Counsel, do you have any questions before I go to the public here? I'm going to go to the public.
Yeah, I was going to say, go to public, then I'll make a comment.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to make comment on Agenda Item 43 through 43D? Do we have any online comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll close public comment, and Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rogers, first, you know, let me say that I think you guys have been really diligent in working with us and working with the community, and we appreciate that. And I know this is a part of major reconstruction along the thoroughfare with the organization that owns this, which is good, which is great. I do share, and it's interesting, the mayor picked up on it very quickly, that—and same thing that I did, and we were out there, and we actually—we actually used that entrance as a parking stop to take some photos or some things, and so we're very familiar with it. In your professional opinion, you don't believe that if there is an egress on MLK that is going to further hinder backing that tight corridor of people getting on 15, people getting on 95. It's even—you know, the entryway to the 15 already needs—and this is after Project Neanderthal, already needs another turn signal, right? It needs—it should be really a double turn lane there, because the traffic is backed up. And there's no doubt that at Bonanza and MLK and the 95, that there's a pinch point there. In your professional opinion—and I respect your opinion—you don't believe that that will further hinder traffic if there is an egress there? And maybe there should be an egress on Bonanza and then just a—I mean, excuse me, an ingress on Bonanza and an egress on MLK, right? Because you're only going to come out, and you can only go right, you can only go south. That might eliminate. But I know that you have to get the trucks and et cetera through to where it's got to go to, because there's a—it looks like there's a landing—I mean, a loading zone around that side. What's your thoughts?
Well, Councilman and Mayor, this dealership is a new equipment dealership. There's one other like it, a John Deere dealership in North Las Vegas that we were able to identify. In fact, we cited it in our traffic analysis that was submitted with the application. And so it's not that there'll be trucks delivering used equipment or equipment for maintenance. That doesn't happen at this facility. It's like a new car dealership, except it's a new equipment dealership. And so the larger building really exists on the site to assemble the equipment that's being sold, kind of like you might detail a car before it gets delivered to a new owner. So we don't expect that there's going to be truck deliveries daily, and we're not even sure the quantity by the week. It might be—certainly, we'll have to stock the site in the beginning, but then it'll be a onesies, twosies kind of delivery every now and again. And they certainly can be scheduled off-traffic hours if that was a concern.
Yeah. And so even if it's trucks, it's still going to—just for the nature of the fact that you're building that facility there. There are no employees that work there now, right? They work further west, down and also across the street at the other facility. Just by the nature of this facility being there, it's going to drive more traffic, whether it's trucks or normal automobiles onto MLK in that entrance, especially if that's the main entrance. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Councilman. Through you, Madam Mayor. There is a condition of approval on the site development review that reads that all large trucks accessing the site, such as those delivering or removing proposed construction equipment, shall take access only through Bonanza Drive—
Bonanza, right.
Bonanza Road—
I think I talked about that, right.
—roadway driveway, unless otherwise approved by the city traffic engineer.
Yeah. Would it be very prohibitive for operations if we had all ingress coming in off of Bonanza and only egress coming off MLK? In your professional opinion?
I don't think it would be prohibitive. I have to tell you, though, that the number of employees on the site is likely to be in the handfuls.
Really, yeah.
Not in the 30s or 40s or 50s. It's not like the site to the west. It's just a new equipment dealership.
Right.
So we don't expect there's going to be a lot of vehicular traffic, pedestrian or car traffic every day, and the trucks will be infrequent. But I think it's fair, if you chose a condition of ingress on Bonanza and egress on Martin Luther King, that would be—
Would you have a opposition to having egress only entering on Bonanza? Excuse me, ingress only. I get my ingress and egress. I should say, driving in only on Bonanza and then driving out only on MLK. Let's do this. Let's try it. Once you get open, for a year, and we'll do an administrative review, and if it works out great, then let's continue with it. And if there's no, you know, huge hardship, and if it's not, then we'll discuss it in a year and see how it goes. Is that—
Yes, sir. I think that's—I think that's fair, and I'd agree to that.
Great.
Could I ask a question?
It's your house, Mayor.
Is there—
All means.
Are there any flatbeds delivering? That was my main concern when I was looking at Martin Luther King. I think what you suggested would probably solve that, but then again, too, if there are flatbeds that need a big wide sweep to bring their cargo into the property, that's what I'm looking at more than anything else.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, it would be those kinds of vehicles that would be delivering the equipment that would be displayed and for sale. And frankly, those trucks wouldn't really pass adjacent to the Bonanza or the Martin Luther King frontage. They would actually go to the west of the building and the south of the building to unload their equipment and then drive out of Martin Luther King, given the councilman's condition.
Okay. Because that was—that was the real concern. I've seen flatbeds that have to pull out to make it into the property.
Right, right, right.
And that's where we have accidents, and if we don't have a cutout lane on the side of the property—
You sort of take the other lane. You're almost taking two lanes to pull out and come in, yeah.
You are taking two lanes.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just a concern, and just if you would—
Yeah. Well, coming in off of Bonanza is an easy flow, and you should be able to—even if there are—because we have a number of on Bonanza right there with the stone companies, and there's trucks up and down there, and that is a—you know, that side of Bonanza is the appropriate place for having some manufacturing, because we do already have large trucks coming in and out of there. And so—and I know that the company will build a nice facility, and it's going to be great, and I know you guys will work with us. So if there's any other comments or no other comments, Mr. Lowenstein, you agree with that condition?
Well, yes. Yes, between Mr. Anderson and myself, we have one new condition and one amended condition to address.
Yes.
Thank you. So through you, Madam Mayor, the added condition would be a one-year administrative required review of the on- and off-site circulation shall be conducted from the—from the date of issuance of a business license.
Well—
There's no activity on the site until—
Probably from when it opens, that day it opens, because, you know, the business license could be issued, but then they might not actually open.
Or we can do an issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy, that's fine, the CLP, that's fine. No certificate of occupancy, CLP.
So that would be amended, a one-year administrative required review of—the on- and off-site circulation shall be conducted from the issue—from the date of issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And Mr. Anderson, we have an amending to condition number 10?
Yes, Bart Anderson, Public Works. I'd recommend that condition 10 be amended to read as follows: All large trucks accessing this site, such as those delivering or removing the proposed construction equipment—oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to amend that. Let me restart. All large trucks accessing this site shall enter only through the Bonanza Road driveway, but may egress onto Bonanza Road or Martin L. King Boulevard. And that concludes the amendment.
Does that agreeable?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Attorney, can we take these one vote for all parts, or do we have to go one at a time?
Madam Mayor, for clarification, the amendments are all on 43D, the site development review.
Okay.
So, Mayor, to answer your question—thanks for the question. You can take this all at once, but let's make sure that we talk about our amended conditions on 43D.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve item 43 with the amended conditions on 43D, as well as the added condition on 43D.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you.
Would everyone please vote on 43 with the amended conditions on 43D, and please post. Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 44, 20-0280, following land use entitlement project request on 1.63 acres northeast corner Lake Mead Boulevard and Concord Street. 44A, 20-02—
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, just real quick. Mr. Rogers, before you head out—you mind if I take one second?
Please.
I just want to ensure we're clear on one thing also. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're going to go back—just want to make sure that when we talk about ingress and egress, also during construction.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the question again?
I'm just saying, when we talk about ingress and egress and those conditions, we talk about during construction as well, because you're going to be constructing this site, and there's going to be large trucks coming in and out of there. I just want to make sure that the ingress is on Bonanza, egress will still be on MLK during construction as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, I think we agree to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on 44A, 20-0280, GPA 1 from PF Public Facilities, then medium-density residential. 44B, 20-0280, ZON 1 from CV Civic to RTH, single-family attached. 44C, 20-0280, VAR 1 to allow stub-street terminations where cul-de-sac is required, and private streets without a gate that do not meet public street standards. And 44D, 20-0280, TMP 1 for a proposed 25-lot, single-family, attached residential subdivision. The applicant owner is Rainbow Dreams LLC at AL. Staff recommends denial. Planning commission recommends approval. These are in Ward Five, Councilman Creer. Public hearing items, which I declare open as the applicant or representative present. Good morning.
Good morning. Lightning Christopherson, 2885 East Quail Avenue, 89120, here representing the applicant owner. Just a quick background on the property. The property was originally put together for the extension of Rainbow Academy, and with the changes with the state and the school district, that no longer became feasible. So what we did was, we had a staff put together a plan that we think works for the property as a transition and to meet the West Side Plan. We originally had 25 units. It's actually 22. We reduced the units because of some concerns with the school. So we reduced the units on the east side, and we just added two additional units along Lake Mead. So that's—it gives us the 22 units. The parcel that's there, that's still a single-family residence detached, they've tried to purchase that now for several years, still working on that, but it's not in them at this time, because the parties are far apart. We have provided landscape buffers around them to alleviate the majority of concerns, and that brings us to the units themselves. This will be a for-sale, attached, single-family. It's about 1377 square feet, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, one-car garage, along with additional guest parking with additional guest parking, where that brings the parking up to 60 spaces, where only 44 are required. I'm sorry, 28 are required. I apologize. That, we've got landscape buffers all around the exterior as well as adjacent to the school. And the waivers are due to the width of the drive and the dead end that, on Concordia, but that dead end is only 60 feet. But to help alleviate any concerns with public safety, we have provided firetruck access throughout the property by providing the required radiuses. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are these single-story or two-story?
Two-story.
Two-story.
Yes.
And where is the entrance and exit?
We have two entrances off of Hart Avenue, and we're keeping no entrances. We kept everything off of Lake Mead and Concordia, where we've put it to Hart, where they can access those streetlights.
And how many neighborhood meetings have you held?
The one neighborhood meeting.
Just one?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to make comment? Seeing and hearing none. How about any comments?
No, ma'am.
How about Mr. Lowenstein comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So one point of clarification first. My backup is showing 25 lots from a plan back from November. Has the reduction to 22 lots been submitted to staff, or is this something that we're looking at for the first time?
No, we submitted it back to staff before planning commission.
All right. With that, I'll just go into the staff presentation. It's not really a huge issue in that regard as far as a reduction. While the approval of the requested, while the approval of the requested general plan amendment rezoning would support objectives of the West Las Vegas Plan, if development of the site fell through, the block's land use designation zoning districts would be inconsistent and leave one single-family detached home surrounded by higher-density residential development. No evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances have been presented to support the variance request, and staff recommends denial of that request. As the site development plan review is dependent upon the approval of the variance, staff also cannot support the application. As such, staff has recommended denial of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comment you wish to make back before I turn this over to Councilman Creer?
Again, we're with a single-family attached product for sale. We believe it's a great transition.
And Rainbow Dreams still K-8?
I apologize?
Rainbow Dreams Academy is still a kindergarten through eighth-grade school, or does it have high school students now as well?
No, ma'am. Actually, it's pre-K and K only now.
Pre-K and K only?
Yes.
Wow. I'm sorry to hear that. They were doing so well.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments, councilmen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, look, this is a good project that is going to enhance not only Lake Mead, but also the entire community. And I know that Rainbow Dreams is going to build a beautiful facility, you know, highlight and enhance what's going on in our community. So if there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 48, 44, A, B, C, and D.
And no conditions on that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. This motion to approve 44, A, B, C, D. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Good luck. When are you going to start on it?
Very quickly. We're going to be starting to submit for permits right away.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 45, 20-0306, VAR 1 variance, public hearing. Applicant owner, Mark Delmedico, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet are required for a proposed 207 square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling on 0.06 acres at 10361 Adriana Avenue, PD Plan Development. This is in Ward 4 with Mayor Protem Anthony. The planning commission staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant or representative present? Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Jessica Lane with Proficient Patios, representing the homeowner, Mark Delmedico. Yes, we are requesting approval to propose to build a sunroom on the side property of the client's home. He does have an irregular layout of a yard, so his side yard is what is used as basically his backyard. A five-foot setback is what's requested, and we have a three-and-a-half-foot setback. So that's what we would be requesting reduction of setback on. The sunroom is built out of extrude aluminum with tempered glass, and color would be to match the exterior of the home, kind of very similar to something like this. And that's pretty much it. If you guys have any questions.
Did you have meetings with the neighbors?
So there has been an HOE approval. Shoot, I should have brought that. There isn't an HOE approval letter. Nothing really discussed with neighbors. I don't know if anything came up with the postcard that was sent, because I know it's been sent quite a few times, but not much conversation with neighbors at this point.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Lowenstein?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So the subject lot is approximately 2,600 square feet. The lot coverage with the addition would add up to about 48% of the lot coverage as a result. No evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct a house addition that fails to meet the minimum development standards. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it is concluded the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and is thereby outside of the realm of N.R.S. Chapter 2788 for granting of variances, and therefore staff has recommended denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Which house is the house?
So why I was saying it's irregular shaped, this is his property. As you see, this is a back street. It's constant, not sure if I can pronounce that right, Constantinople is the street. This is the side, which is just like a dog run. He's only got nine foot, so I don't know. Well, I'll show you the plot plan. But this is not used as his backyard. This is his backyard, which meets to this neighbor. Obviously, this is the front of the property, so he drives here. He's got his gate, and this is his backyard. That is where the proposal to build the sunroom is right here. As, going back to plot plan here, this being where the street's at, he's only have eight feet back there, so there'd be no way we could build, I mean, the room's only a nine-foot projection by 23 feet in length, which is very reasonable in size. Normally, we build them 10 feet or 12 feet. This one, we shortened it to nine. There'd be no way we could build a nine foot. We'd be, you know, we'd be into rear setback. This was the only side, obviously, that he uses as side yard that we'd be able to build with a three-and-a-half-foot setback.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone wishing, anyone here wishing to make comment on agenda item 45? Anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Any comments, Council? Councilman Mayor Protem, please. Thank you.
So at the, at the planning commission, apparently nobody showed up at the planning commission representing this particular item. Is that correct?
So we did. There's been two meetings. I attended the first one. The first one, the plot plan was drawn in properly by my staff. So we, so they, I brought it up and said, actually, they had drawn it in the back. So at the meeting, I said, no, it's at the side yard. So whoever staff said, no, Jess, you need to redo plot plan and come back in for another meeting. And that was the meeting that was missed, and then now we're here at this meeting.
So the meeting?
Well, there's been three meetings set. First one, I was here, plot plan was in the correct side. This is the second one that was missed, and then this is the third meeting.
So the planning commission meeting where they denied it was?
It's never been heard, because they didn't even allow me to.
The planning commission denied this item.
I think that was the second meeting where we did not attend.
Through you, Madam Mayor, and for you, Mayor Protem. So there's a pre-application conference meeting with the applicant. That's the initial, where we would give information back and forth about just correcting any plans for that sort. Then there's the actual planning commission meeting, which no one was in attendance. Planning commission recommended denial on the item, heard it, and recommended denial. This will be the third meeting in which you guys will be making your decision on the application.
Okay. So how come?
I'm sorry, sir. I have to correct on some things. So there was this, the meeting where we went in person, and we came into a meeting like this at 6:00 P.M., which was not even heard. One staff came out to the site and said, if the plot plan's incorrect, it'll be put on the next agenda. So there was a meeting that we came into that was not heard because of the plot plan.
So the original meeting in January, it was held in advance. In February, the planning commission recommended denial on the item.
And there was no, nobody at that meeting?
That's correct.
From the applicant. How come there was nobody there for that meeting?
I just missed the date, sir. That was me.
Just missed the date?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I guess the only thing that I don't know, because I haven't, I haven't met with you or the homeowner, anything like that, and the planning commission recommended denial, the house, it would be to the west of this house? That's the side where the sunroom is going to be? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This, this home you're referencing?
So the house to the west of that, do we have any indication on what are they, they're okay with this or not okay with this? Because they're, I mean, they're the ones that are really protected by the setback and the variance, so.
I mean, if you need me to, we can get a letter, you know, notarized letter or something like that.
If I don't have that today, I'm going to deny it. So if you want to, if we, if we want to, if you're okay with obeying it for two weeks, and then you let me know if that neighbor on that side of the house is okay with the variance, it's not going to bother them, because that's why we have these setbacks. If you can provide me that letter, then we can rehear it at the abeyance item. You good with that?
Okay.
Okay. What's the date for the next meeting?
The 7th of April.
April 7th.
Okay. So I'll move to obey this till April 7th, and then you can show up and, or prior to that, send me a letter or some indication from that homeowner that they're okay with this variance, and then we'll go ahead and hear it then.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
And that's a motion to obey to April 7th. Please vote and please post.
Would you like to do an oral vote?
Okay. Thank you, and that motion then carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item 47, 20-0378, MOD 1, major modification, public hearing, applicant owner, the Howard Hughes Corporation LLC, for possible action, land use entitlement project request for a major modification of the approved Summerlin development standards to modify the general residential setback standards. PC Plan Community Zone, Ward 2, Councilman Seaman, and Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant's representative present? Yes, she is.
And?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the Council, Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Howard Hughes Corporation. As you know, Summerlin is, if not probably, the number-one master plan community in the country. This is a major modification today to update and clean up a couple of things within their design standards that have been in place for many years. It's important, as times change, the market changes, product types change, that Summerlin also evolve, and that's how they stay the, one of the top master plan communities in the country. So today, what we're doing is two things. First is just to clean up item with respect to how they measure their corner setbacks. They've been interpreting it the same as the city, which is to measure it from the property line, and so this is just a cleanup item to be consistent and paired up with the city's measurement of those corner setbacks. The second is to allow what are called entry portals. Entry portals are used for product types that builders have where the front doors are actually on the sides of the homes, and I'll show you some pictures. What Summerlin has been doing is asking their builders to use these additional architectural elements so that from the streetscape, you can see where the front door is a little bit better. It's an upgrade and an improvement, they believe, to their communities, and they've been specifically asking builders to do this. And this amendment to the design standards would allow them. So first, if I could direct your attention to the overhead, I'll show you an example of some homes that aren't in Summerlin and what they look like with these front doors that are on the sides of the home. So you can see, this is a two-story home. You have the garage and a window in front, but you don't see a front door from the street. If it weren't for this path here, you wouldn't even know that the front door is actually on the left-hand side of the home. This is another example. Same thing. You can see there's a little path, but the front door is on that left side of the home. You wouldn't know it if you were driving up to the street were it not for that pathway. What they are proposing, and some examples of homes, are to provide an architectural element similar to this, where you have a little stucco area and a fence, so you know that the front door is, is on this side of the house. There's still a walkway over there, and the front door's in the exact same place, but you have an enhancement to the streetscape so that you know exactly where the front door is. This, in this particular instance, this requires a zero setback on this little tiny portion of the encroachment. It is not a zero setback, the entire length of the property line, and it would never be that case with the language that we're proposing. But there is a situation where you may have a portion of this encroaching to the zero-foot setback. I'll give you another example. Here's another example of a stuccoed entry portal, where you can see there's a door at the front, and this actually shows a bird's-eye view into the courtyard almost area. It's a cool little entry area where the door is still on the side of the house, but you do have an entry portal so that you know where the front door is on these Summerlin homes. The language that's before you today in the design standards addresses several of these things. This is the current language. The entry portals are permitted within the side yard setbacks for homes that gain access to the front door via the side yard in SF3 residential districts. The entry portal may be built with a zero setback so long as they are not enclosed and remain no greater than four feet in depth and 11 feet in height on the property line. They are not, they are only permitted as part of original construction, which I think that's an important piece, so that future homeowners can't come in and add these entry portals. It would just be the builders that would do that as part of the original construction. In the staff report, there's two concerns they raised, so we are proposing this added language. The first was that there be no scenario where you have a shared property line and you have two entry portals next to each other, because then it can look like you have one big building. So we would propose that neighboring properties cannot both have entry portals along the shared same property line. The second concern was drainage. They wanted to ensure that there be no scenario where the drainage overflows to an adjacent property. So we've added language that all roof drainage from entry portals must be contained within the same lot. Gutters and other roof drainage appurtenances must not encroach into the neighboring property. This is the language that your planning commission unanimously approved and that we would ask for your approval today. We think that this incorporates the intent of what they're looking to do and will improve the street scene for some of their developments and allow some of the builders to kind of evolve and make sure their product types are a little bit of a step up in the Summerlin community. So we very much appreciate your approval today with this added language, and I'll submit it for the record as well. Happy to answer your questions.
Ms. Allen, who owns the wall? Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Lowenstein to make comment, but the reality is, if you plant trees on one side of the wall and those roots become mature, they can lift walls, make their strength less significant, and fall over, and they're going under the wall into an adjacent property, because these are so tight to each other. Is there anything in what is prepared here about the size of the tree and its root condition as they're planting each place?
Madam Mayor, no, this is not addressing the planting of landscape materials on the lot. To your earlier question, usually the property line runs typically is down the center of the wall, so there's ownership on either side. It becomes a civil matter between the two parties, addressing any damage done by the wall. The master CCNRs and/or the sub-association CCNRs may address the type of landscaping next to common elements, where walls may be lifted, where it's the common element and a property owner versus two property owners. However, this amendment is specifically to a architectural component to the home versus anything to do with the walls. versus anything to do with the walls.
And there's no responsibility of the city for exposure to liability on that wall, depending on the planting of what's going in there, because we're approving this?
Well, regarding walls through the building permit process, you'll have it permitted, inspected, and final. At that point, it's past the criteria and as, you know, city standards and International Building Code or Residential Building Code standards. But particular to this application, I do have a kind of a thing to go through, similar to what was at Planning Commission, because you do have backup materials in your supplementals that are not reflected on here that mirror what Ms. Allen presented. I just need to make sure that the, the record's clear as we go forward.
So will you give that, please, and then I'll go to the public hearing?
Sure.
Please.
Since the original application submitted, the applicant has adjusted the following language, which can be found within your supplemental materials. The last line of paragraph 2B was amended to read, "Corner setback line shall be the property line." And paragraph 2M was amended to, to add, "Neighboring properties cannot have entry portals along the same shared property line. All roof drainage from the entry portal must be contained within the same lot. Gutters and other roof drainage appurtenances must not encroach into the neighboring property." Staff finds, while the amended language alleviates previous concerns regarding how corner setbacks are measured, the zero-foot side yard setback for entry portals is not consistent with the intent of the single-family residence design principles, and the staff is therefore recommending denial of the requested modification. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Planning Commission, anything there to add to that report of why they were not?
No, there was not a lot of deliberation on the particular item, and they recommended approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come on Agenda Item 47, please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, we will find out about none.
None, ma'am.
And so, Councilwoman Seaman and Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Anthony, have you been speaking with each other? Councilwoman Seaman?
I move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 47, and please vote, and please post. Do you want to do an oral? You're not going, Councilwoman, for some reason.
I cannot find my.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 48, Reports and Presentations. Report by School Associate Superintendents on the Current Educational Operations in Schools Within the Clark County School District, CCSD, and the City of Las Vegas, all wards. And before you even say anything, this lovely lady, Dr. Diane Sebrant, I think it's your birthday today. Coming? My calendar was wrong, so you're getting an early birthday. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, turning it over to you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Councilmen and Women, Dr. Tammy Malich.
It was Sebrant, and I'm thinking, excuse me, Dr. Malich. No wonder it's not yours. Good morning.
Dr. Tammy Malich, Director of Youth Development, Social Innovation, for the record. It is my pleasure today to bring you the presentation for the quarterly update by Ms. Lorna James Cervantes, CCSD School Associate Superintendent, regarding updates for all schools impacting all wards. This presentation fulfills the current statutory requirement created by AB 469 for CCSD to provide quarterly updates to the city council. The presentation will be live before I turn it over. I do have backup handouts for you, because there's a font issue, and they will not pull up on the overhead. So I will turn it over to Lorna, and I will hand out the backup material. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Mayor Goodman, council members. I'm Lorna James Cervantes, School Associate Superintendent with the Clark County School District, and I'm happy to be here today to present to you an update on where we are right now with reopening of the Clark County School District and our work at the present time. Let me get the clicker here. Okay, so I wanted to start today just by sharing with you where we are presently. As you know, we began this school year in full-distance education. I shared that with you the last time I was here in the fall. Currently, we are beginning to move toward opening our schools in a hybrid learning model. Parents and staff members were surveyed and provided the opportunity to select which cohort they wanted their child to attend, if they wanted their children to attend a school in a hybrid model or maintain in full-distance learning. Also, teachers were provided the opportunity to give input on whether they would like to return to in-person teaching or remain teaching in a distance-learning model. The hybrid implementation guide release was created, and it's been updated several times to include all of the important guidelines for our schools and reopening our schools. This included transition timelines, implementation checklists, health and safety protocols, facility preparation and maintenance, school operations, food service, transportation, technology, athletics, human resources, and communications. At the beginning of the year, when I was here, you asked me to speak to you about challenges that we face with distance learning. And, and as you know, one of the biggest challenges that we were facing when we were here last fall was with connectivity. And I'm happy to say that since meeting with you last, 100% of students and families who have had a concern with connectivity or with technology have been addressed. We have been able to provide those, the services and the technology devices necessary for our families. And that was a lot, and due to, to your help and your assistance from different council members, as well as the City of Las Vegas. So we thank you for your support in those efforts. Also, I just have to take this opportunity to say that our teachers have adapted and are doing an outstanding job of educating our students in this very difficult time through distance education and through the transition back to the hybrid model for our elementary teachers. We're continuing to reach out to individual students who need additional assistance in small group instruction, and also providing one-on-one and group assistance to our students. You asked me, when we were here last time, what we saw as far as enrollment concerns with our different schools in the different wards, and if there were particular student groups or populations that were, that were most challenged by their enrollment in our schools. So I provided for you a spreadsheet. It has a list by ward. It's broken down by ward, and shows you percentages for each of our student groups, Asian, Black, African-American, White, Hispanic, American Indians, and, and Native Americans, students of two or more races, or Native Hawaiians. And it will show you the breakdown by each ward of those student enrollments for our schools. And it's interesting how it's not only one particular group of students where we've seen the biggest drops of enrollment. It sometimes varied from ward to ward. And what I did on that spreadsheet that you were, should have received, is we highlighted in yellow those groups that had the largest drop for each of the wards, so that you could see where those, those trends were across each of the wards in the city. If you'd like, I could pause here for a quick minute, or I'll, or go ahead and go on.
Now I think just a quick look that we can have.
Okay. All right, if there are any particular questions with the enrollment, I'll go ahead and go on to the next slide in our presentation, I think. Back one, I. It's okay. So now I want to just bring you up to date, thank you so much, bring you up to date with where we are currently with our reopening, as many of you may know, especially if you have children in our schools. On March 1st, all of our pre-K through 3rd grade students have the opportunity to return in a hybrid instructional model for face-to-face instruction. That was based on parent surveys and the parents' desire to bring their children back into a hybrid learning model. Throughout the time, even if parents didn't originally say they wanted their children to return in a hybrid model, if we've had space, we've gone ahead and just added kids to that learning model as their parents made additional requests, even if they had not originally said that's what they wanted. Coming up next week, on March 2nd, 20th, sorry, Grade 6, 9, and 12 will be returning to a hybrid learning model. Again, this is based on the parents' decision to have their children return in a hybrid learning model two days a week, or if they would like them to remain in a full-time distance-learning model. April 6th, right after spring break, all students in 7th, 8th, 10th, and 11th grade will be able to return in a hybrid learning model. And also, on that same day, our students in pre-K through 5th grade will be able to return five days a week or remain in the distance-learning model, depending on what their parents select for them. I think it's important for me to point out that one of the reasons that we're using this approach of bringing students in hybrid first and then moving to the full five days is because through the, through the state reopening requirements, we have to have students in, in a hybrid learning model first for 21 days to show in a small group rollout that things are working well, that all of the safety expectations and requirements are on, in place before we can then move to the full in-person learning model. Also, when I was here before, you asked us about remediation plans to address learning gaps, and we have been working throughout the year on that, to make sure that all of our students have the opportunities that they need. First of all, through distance learning, our teachers provided small group instruction for students. We continued our response to instruction model throughout all of the distance learning time, where students may have received additional assistance as they needed, and teachers continue to monitor their learning using data. Also, at our Zoom schools, our Zoom reading centers continue to operate in, in a distance-learning model, where students who needed additional assistance with reading and literacy were still provided that assistance. As we're moving into the hybrid learning model, then that, that small group instruction will come into place in person. And on, on April 6th, then our students who are returning in the full five-day-a-week model will have the opportunity to receive that assistance in person as well. Also, throughout this time, we've used a number of online programs and, and web-based programs to assist our students, such as Khan Academy, Smarty Ants, Achieve 3000, and other such programs to help to engage students in learning on their individual levels. And we have implemented MAPS testing throughout the year. Our teachers had a lot of really in-depth discussions with parents about their children's performance on their very first MAP assessment, and made sure that parents understood the need for the students to show exactly what it is that they knew when taking those, those tests without assistance during distance learning, so that our teachers better understood what the children needed to learn and how to better assist them. Also, another big concern that we had, have had as a district and as a city and a state throughout the past several months has been with the emotional and mental health of our students. Social-emotional concerns are at the forefront of all of our educators' minds. The number of student suicides were doubled the number from the year before at the beginning of this school year. We invested in Go Guardian beacon alerts, and those were put in place to help to identify students who needed assistance. Currently, CCSD Police, Metro Police, and other police officers have worked together to complete welfare checks on students in crisis and to help them with gaining access to school and community resources. That has been a very important work that has been done in cooperation with the city, Metro Police Department, and CCSD Police Department, to help to assist our students. And oftentimes, our families, our parents may not have known how their children were feeling until the officers did those welfare checks on their children. So it's, it's been a very important piece of the work that has happened. We want to just, I just want to explain to you exactly what a hybrid instructional model is looking like. So currently, in our elementary schools, it, it looks like this. Monday and Tuesday, students in Cohort A attend class in person all day, while students in Cohort B and C would attend online classes. On Wednesday, all students engage in online coursework, and Wednesdays are a day for enhanced cleaning between the different cohorts of students in the school. Then on Thursday and Friday, students in Cohorts A and C remain in distance learning, and students in Cohort B learn in person in the class. Our schools have implemented the hybrid learning model in a few different ways. In some of the schools, teachers either are assigned to students in Cohort A or Cohort, and Cohort B, or to Cohort C, so they're only teaching either in person or online. At other schools, because the number of parents and students that returned to education were, were greater, some of the teachers are teaching both in person and online at the same time, so they're live-streaming their, their classes to the children at home. The difference between the elementary and the middle-high school model is that elementary students have come to in-person learning all day. At the middle and high school, students will be in-person classes in the morning for their first two periods of the day. Then they will have a transition period to home, and in the afternoon, they will take those classes either synchronously or asynchronously online with their, with their teachers and classmates. I just want to close with a few comments, and these are really things that you addressed with me when I was here last time, and I wanted to bring back some answers to you about these questions. First of all, again, we had those, those concerns about the safety and well-being of students and staff. And I just want to assure you that the well-being and the safety of our students and staff have been a top priority of the Clark County School District and all of us throughout this, throughout this pandemic. It always has been, but even more so, I think it's been magnified during this time. We've continued comprehensive health and safety procedures, which are outlined in the, in the Hybrid Instructional Model Implementation Guide. It's available online in both English and Spanish at reconnect.ccsd.net. And our schools are undertaking daily safety protocols to make sure that everybody remains safe and healthy while at school. Every employee does a check before coming to work every day that includes a screening for any COVID-19 symptoms, as well as taking their temperatures themselves and self-reporting it. And we have a lot of extensive work going on with nurses throughout the district as well. Also, you asked about our expectations and plans if CCSD enrollment is lower on count day four of the coming 2021, 22 school year. And I just want to reiterate that we are funded based on student enrollment, and will make any necessary adjustments based on our enrollment at the beginning of the year that we have to. However, at this point in the year, as we were planning forward, looking ahead to next year, we conservatively projected our school enrollment for next year to help mitigate any decreases in enrollment next year. It would be much easier for us to have an increase in student enrollment, of course, and then to make adjustments in the fall than it would be to, to overplan at this time and over, to over-project our student enrollment at this time, and then have to make cuts in our schools. We also anticipate a number of students returning to CCSD schools from charter and private schools once we reopen in the hybrid or full-person learning. We're already seeing that. Our elementary schools are seeing a large number of parents who are saying, okay, now that you're beginning to return in, in person, in the hybrid model, or in April, back to the five-day-a-week, they're returning already from some of the private and the at-home schooling that they've been taking place in at the beginning of this year. Also, I was asked to address any considerations or accommodations regarding sensitivity to equity, diversity, and inclusion within our schools. And equity and opportunities are a priority for us as a school district. We have actually goals set out in our Focus 2024 plans that are specific to equitable access for all students in, in education. And we have created systems to ensure equitable instructional opportunities and advanced coursework through implementation of course enrollment guides that are being used across all CCSD schools, vertical feeder alignment, professional learning groups among principals, and data disaggregation to ensure a constant focus on equitable opportunities for all students. Our grading policies are currently being reviewed by a cadre of principals who are working to update grading policies that are equitable for all students. We're working with Student Services Division to closely track student discipline and reduce exclusionary disciplinary practices. Our Human Resources Division- Our Human Resources Division is diversifying teacher recruitment at historically black-serving or Hispanic-serving institutions to help diversify our teaching staff as well. And we have broadened the pipeline for support professionals to attain the coursework necessary to earn their teaching credentials and for teachers to earn their administrative endorsements. And I can specifically speak to that because I've had a number of employees who worked for me in the past, they started as support staff employees. For example, a teacher's resource room assistant at my previous school, John S. Park Elementary School, is now a teacher at Fremont Middle School because she has had the opportunity to work through that process and that pipeline. And that's just one example. We're also expanding CTA programs to include teacher preparation programs, beginning in high school, in an effort to grow our own high-quality teachers for the Clark County School District. And finally, you asked us about our legislative intents moving into this session. I know we're probably about halfway through the session right now. I included for you as a handout a copy of the school district's legislative priorities for this year, but really, they center around several main buckets: internet connectivity, staffing efficiency, school funding, school safety and mental health, and improved learning conditions for all of our students. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come and to share with you today what's happening in the Clark County School District. And at this time, I would love to entertain any questions, concerns, or comments that you might have. I would just like to give one shout-out. I know Councilwoman Knudsen has been working to expand our work in our schools this year with a couple of schools under Dr. Sam Scavella. We have brought the Reinvent Schools model into two additional schools under his work with Dr. Scavella, so thank you for that. Councilwoman Knudsen.
Wonderful. Thank you for your report. Very informed and wonderful. So let's find out, any questions, comments? And certainly, yes, we'll start with you, since you got all that praise, you get to go first.
Thank you, Mayor, and I sincerely appreciate the presentation, and I remember all the questions I asked last time you were here, and you answered all the questions. So I just want to say, for the mayor and for this council, some of the work that I've been doing, and it's really because of you, Ms. Montes. When I hit roadblocks against CCSD, and I routinely do, I can pick up the phone and call you and ask for guidance and assistance, and that's what allows, I think, me to be successful in working with the school district. So a lot of this presentation is, I think, it's so confusing. As a parent, I just can't even imagine how to navigate the school district right now. But I know that you care about students, and the people who work for you care about students, and the teachers care about students, and we all care about children. For the work that I'm doing with the Associate Superintendent Scavella, we're looking at two schools in particular, Waston and Rex Bell, and we're integrating the UNLV School of Medicine, Dental Medicine, School of Nursing, Liberal Arts. We also have private sector partners that'll be coming forward, working with the Mayor's Fund for Life. But it really is about this focusing in on the student and the teachers, making sure that they're prepared to deal with the next, whatever's coming next, and it's hard to predict at this point. In my rounds with principals, what I heard over and over again is the teachers are struggling at their own stress, their own trauma associated with students who have such extreme trauma in their lives, and I can only imagine that's been exacerbated over this past year. So I think as a city, and me in particular, whatever we can do to support the full reopening of schools, children going back to school, and children being prepared, and teachers being prepared to deal with whatever comes in this next school year, I would do anything in my power to make sure that children are successful in schools. And if I can't do it with CCSD, whoever that is in CCSD, then I will pick up the phone and call you, and I really, really appreciate the fact that you answer, so thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you, Councilman. It really is important. I know that we were looking with hope at a magnet school at Waston, which I gather is on pause, but it sounds like you've made some headway as to curricular emphasis.
Lots of headways. It's always a pause until it's not, and I'll still leave it there, because I will continue to work with CCSD, but there's lots of ways to work with students and teachers without the name associated with it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman Diaz.
Madam Mayor, I have a lot of questions.
Go for it.
It's always good to see you. This is my language, and so anytime you talk education, automatically you captivate my attention. So the first question I wanted to ask is, in the drop in the changes of enrollment, because I just was able to internalize the information, what are we, I guess, attributing the decline in enrollment to? Were most of these students that are missing from CCSD, did they transfer to other educational options? Did they move out of state? So have we taken a deep dive to see why we're at a negative for so many students in various, and it's not just one ethnicity, it's across the board?
I know that in speaking to our principals, who have made multiple calls to families and to parents, and also working with our district personnel, a lot of what we see are, there were a large number of students, especially in some of our neighborhoods, some of our Summerland Schools, some of our schools in Southern Highlands, areas like that, where students have gone either to private schools or to some of the parochial schools that were offering full-in-person learning at the beginning of the year. However, many of those parents are already beginning to call and say, "Okay, as soon as you're back, we're coming back." So we know that that's some of the students. Also, in working, I'll just give an example with Mrs. Esparza, one of my principals at Valley High School. We know that many of our students have reported, or their families have reported, same thing with Ruby Thomas Elementary School, that they have had to move in with other family members, either in another state, they've gone back to home, or many of them to California or other neighboring states where they could move in with family members because the parents were out of work. And there is a desire, I think, on many of their parts, to move back when they can, but we'll have to wait and see. Also, with several of our high school students, and this isn't disaggregated out by high school, middle school, or elementary school, but I know that we've had a number of students in our high schools who are working to help to support their families and help their families along the way. As we can for seniors, we have been able to provide what are called senior load exemptions for some of those students, where the students are given the opportunity as a senior to take a smaller load of coursework so that they can work and help to support their families at home. So we do see that going. That doesn't include in the withdrawals, but we're constantly just working to get our students back. If you would like, Councilwoman Diaz, I can go back and I can ask our Student Service Department to see if we couldn't find out where some of these students have gone and get more in-depth detail behind it, but I can tell you that anecdotally, those are the stories I'm hearing from our schools, from our principals, and from our parents who call in, because we have parents who call our offices asking for assistance with how to navigate the systems.
And I'd love that data, and I think that it would also be prudent maybe to wait until we have a forecast of the next school year, so we can compare where we are currently with the registration numbers now, and then where we're headed with the next school year. And that brings me to a next point I wanted to address. You know, we have, to be culturally sensitive and also recognize that, you know, as we've been on the vaccination front and trying to tackle this process, it's been a heady process in terms of getting people their vaccinations because they have to register and preregister for this. For some of our communities, that's incredibly difficult, because, one, they don't know how to navigate the technology; two, you're like flying from thing to thing. You don't have that structure to say, "Oh, let me fit it in at this time because I have a predictable schedule." A lot of people don't have that luxury. So I wanted to know what efforts the school district will be embarking on to assist parents who may need assistance with registration processes, because I know, year after year after year, even though we've transitioned to infinite campus, some of our parents struggle, struggle to know how to recover that password that they need to then re-register their children, and so how are we going to close that gap and facilitate that process?
That's a great question, and I can tell you that what I know we have done before, we will continue to do, and that is, individual schools actually open their schools, and they have computers set up in their schools where they'll have a staff member sit side-by-side with parents to help them to recover passwords, helps them to complete the enrollment process. We have had back-to-school fairs where we assist parents through the enrollment processes as well. And our Faces, that's our family, it's our family support unit, has an RV that they'll take out to the communities, and they will hold events to help parents to enroll their students, get them back into school. As soon as the Health District is able to support it, I know in the past, we have worked with them as well in making sure students are getting vaccines that they need in order to be enrolled in schools. That is something that we've been working on as a school district right now, is making sure students have their regular vaccines, not to mention their COVID vaccines, just their regular vaccines that they need to be enrolled in school. And many of our parents and our families rely on the Southern Nevada Health District for those vaccines, and at current, they're struggling to have that capacity. So any support we can get on that front, I'm sure we would be helpful for. I know that's really county, but we would still love any support in that factor. If there are other efforts that are being made, I know we will amp up these efforts moving into the school year because it's our top priority to have our students enrolled. But if there are any other new ideas that come forward, I'll be happy to share those with you in a future meeting.
Thank you, and I think that there is maybe some appetite on our behalf to help also on that front. We can probably be an ally and support the work, so I'm sure Dr. Malich and some of our staff here can coordinate some of that response. So another question, before I forget, because I have a couple more questions to get to, I do want to sing praises to our teachers. I recently walked into a few classrooms for Reading Week, and, oh my goodness, I felt so out of my element with them having to do this hybrid instruction where they have kids through the screen and they have the kids present physically, and they were just, "Okay, kids," and they were just doing awesome. So I just want to say, teachers, thank you for staying the course to meet the needs of all of our kids and all of our families, parents who are choosing to keep their kids home, you know, kids that are coming back into our classes, but the teachers are really being flexible, and I didn't want to forget to give them praise for adapting to this very fluid situation. I guess the last couple of questions I would have is, are we entertaining summer learning opportunities? Because as I talk to people who work in the school district, and they relay stories about pre-kindergartners not being able to adequately write their names still at this juncture, you know, and, you know, students who are attending the classes but not submitting the work, I become really concerned about what that means in terms of their academic achievement, where they're going to be when they come back into the classroom. Does that mean they're behind half a year, three-quarters of a year, a full year? And so what are we going to do as a community who cares about our children to get our children up to speed? Because we know that that deficit can come and be very detrimental, maybe not right here in the now, but a few years from now. And so what are we poised to do? Are we offering summer learning opportunities? What are we going to do to get these kids who may be a little behind when they come back into our classrooms? What are we thinking of doing for them?
What I can speak to right now is that there are plans in the works right now for summer learning opportunities for students, but they are being rolled, they're being completed right now. I can tell you that there are plans in the works for summer learning opportunities, as well as bridge programs. We generally offer extended school year opportunities for our students in our self-contained special education programs. Those are all still being worked on right now as we speak. They haven't been, the final plans haven't been shared with the board yet, but I can assure you that that planning has been taking place for a while now. And as soon as we're able to present that, we are happy to present that, and it will be shared publicly. I know we're just waiting for those last little details to be worked out right now.
Well, and I think the federal government has set aside funds specifically for summer learning.
Yes.
So as the plans come out and they're integrated, that will be wonderful.
And then I did want to also say thank you for recognizing the importance to have diverse administration and diverse principals. I think that you do a better job connecting to your community and understanding where they're coming from as well and embracing them, so I love that. And the last question I had is, will 6th and 12th, 6th through 12th graders, I didn't see it noted anywhere in the presentation, will they be coming back for five-days-a-week instruction?
The discussion took place as to whether or not that should happen. I know we were really, if we had brought them, had been able to bring them back earlier in the year, that absolutely was the plan. At this point in the school year, as we're bringing the students back on the 22nd and then on April 6th, because there would be about seven weeks left in the school year, the plan really right now is to bring them back in that hybrid model. If anything changes, of course, we will share that with the community, but right now, the plan is continue them through the hybrid learning model through the end of this school year, and then looking so that we can, I don't want to say hopefully, but hopefully, my extreme hope, and I know the superintendent's is too, is that we would come back at the beginning of this school year in a face-to-face learning model.
And so I just want to echo Councilwoman Knudsen's comments about being supportive of our children, of their learning, because they are our workforce of tomorrow, and we need to keep our workforce here. We need to educate them, we need to have them, and it's kind of like, we're trying to create the jobs of tomorrow, but we need to have the workers of tomorrow. So I hope that we can all work collaboratively for the benefit of our children moving forward.
Absolutely, and anyone who needs to reach out directly through me, like Councilwoman Knudsen did, I'm happy to be here. Also, Dr. Malich knows how to get ahold of me, so she can call me anytime. That you have anything specific that's not being addressed, that I can either put you in contact with the correct person or get the answers for you myself.
Thank you. Well, it's wonderfully collaborative, and Councilwoman Fiora, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, you mentioned it, and I'm grateful that you mentioned it, and this isn't directed at you. This is directed basically at our public school system that has failed our children through this pandemic, and I say that because private schools are open, and this is exactly why parents need school choice, because the money that we pay to the public schools between $7,000 and $11,000, depending upon each student, if all the parents knew that that money could follow their kids in a private school, and they could have been in private school this whole time through this pandemic, it would have saved a lot of lives and a lot of scars. The incidences that have happened across our Clark County, I'll just talk about, with the abuse, the verbal abuse, the physical abuse, the sexual abuse, to our children that their only safety zone is your public schools, and you shut them down, you closed them down, and they weren't allowed to be there, we have suicides. And let me tell you, it's not something to be proud of for this state, for shutting our schools down, for hurting our children, when private schools can do it. And some of us up here send our kids to private schools, and some of us don't, and the majority of our working-hard folks can't do that, but they really, really, really need to know that our tax dollars for our children need to follow those children, because when you won't teach them and you keep them in an unsafe condition at home, when they're in an abusive home, that is not fair. I am not praising this school system. I am not okay with our schools being closed. I am not okay with all of the abuse our children took when it could have been prevented by them being in school. So I hope you guys get your act together.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Okay, with that, this has been a report, so no motion. I'm sorry we stole Dr. Malich from you, but
I know.
Our game there, she's just been tremendous and obviously in a passion about what she does, and has had the background, so she totally understands what everybody, as a parent and as a student, are trying to get through this. So thank you very much for keeping us posted. How many teachers are we short at this time?
Oh, that's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on I'll have to get back to you on that question. I could have told you any other year.
Around 400?
I'd say, I'd say it's probably close to that. That's, that's generally where our number has been. And I know that, I will say this, if there are any substitute teachers out there, or teachers out there who are listening and are wanting to come back to work, we want you, we need you.
And who do they call? Substitute teachers, anybody retired teachers, we desperately need you in the classroom.
That's right. CCSD.net is where they put in their application and then they can call our human resources department.
Wonderful. Please, if you're out there, it's, at times are really asking you to do this. In the last piece, we went from about 320,000 students overall. Where, where are we about now, 312?
Yes, that sounds, we're about 312,000, 317,000 students.
And still tracking as best we can, where if they've left the state or whatever.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good weekend. When you get to it, we appreciate your keeping us current.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time today and thank you for all that you do for our schools.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Dr. Malich. Happy birthday, Anu.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda 49, which is setting the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings and appeals from city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements.
Thank you.
They're hiding behind balloons. I don't even see Stacy there. Okay. And so now we are into our second citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time any single speakers allow may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Too many people celebrating St. Patrick's Day, right? All right, we'll close public comment and now move on to emerging issues. And discussion regarding potential items for future city council agendas, all wards, any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed items should be placed on future agenda and no discussion regarding the substance of any such proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do members of council have any items to address and add to agenda? Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think as we're hopefully on the right trajectory to, to start reopening our economy and doing things, I think it's much needed to put back on our agendas the celebration piece that we used to do where we would recognize the work of someone in the community. And I think that there's been a lot of unsung heroes through this past year that we haven't been able to appropriately recognize. And so I was wondering if there would be a way for us to entertain bringing that component where we recognize our community that's doing stellar work in, in a safe, respectful way. But I, I just feel like the celebration piece is, is, I think instrumental in us looking forward and also praising people who are doing amazing work day in and day out. And so I just wanted to see if we could entertain bringing that component piece to kind of bring us maybe full circle to where we were before we, we had to change our, our protocols. So just food for thought.
Mr. Sarandes, a discussion on that or comments? Because I know watching different bodies, whether it's the Las Vegas Convention of Visitors Authority, the RTC, the County Commission, at this point, it's been very light, if at all, because of the conditions of the ability to house and seat people who are part of that celebration, so.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. We have discussed that through our team, Mayor, and, you know, we're still concerned about just the social dis requirement and can we do it in a manner that still meets all the compliance and the directives? And so we'll look at that again and see if there's an opportunity there for that at a limited basis. I know for a while there's some of our ceremonial lines are getting large and long and especially items when we have, for example, some of the youth sports where they come get their awards, they're very large crowds. And so let us look at it, see if there's an opportunity to do some sort of smaller situation.
And yes, any other comments from council? Okay, so Mr. Sarandes, anything else that you wanted to add here that we need to be looking at?
No, Mayor, again, just whatever you all like to spring forward, we can do that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 52, Councilmember recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Any member of council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? So we're going to play ping pong since you had to miss because you had an appointment at last, council. I'm going to start with you. Councilwoman Fiora, Ward 6.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are going to do a cleanup in our Floydland Park this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. So if you want to meet us out there, just when you drive in, our, our little assistant there will tell you exactly where to meet us and we'll be there cleaning up just for a couple hours to help our staff and keep our parks clean. We are going to have a movie in the park on Friday, April 2nd. The Croods, A New Age, and if you haven't seen them, I highly recommend them. I think adults will love this movie too. I love it and I can't wait to see it with my grandkids on Friday night, April 2nd. Meet me over at the Centennial Park and, and it'll be a lot of fun. We also have popcorn and water and stuff we give out for free. We have our Easter celebration and I have to tell you, there are so many people stuffing lots and lots of eggs and great chocolate and this is what we do. So Saturday, April 3rd, the Easter Bunny's going to be at the Floydland Park towards the back. And we're going to be there from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and having a great time and getting back to our real life. Next, I want to talk about Women's History Month. And, you know, because the month of March is Women's History Month, I've been highlighting a woman every single day and I'm going to highlight a very special woman to the end of March. And I also, if you want to email me, if there's a special woman that you would like me to highlight and we can fit her in, that would be great. But for today, I really wanted to highlight Madam Mayor Carolyn Goodman. And I wanted to highlight her because of so many things that she has done. Let's start off with, first of all, she was born in New York, New York, to the Goldman Family. She was a studious child who worked her way to Bryn Mawr College and earned her bachelor's in anthropology. During her time there, she met this crazy young guy from a neighboring college and the two would be wed a year later. And of course, this young man, her groom, was Oscar Goodman. The young couple then moved from Philadelphia to Las Vegas and became enamored with the city and its potential. While Oscar built his law career, Carolyn was building her community. She became involved with our local Jewish Federation and headed the women's division for many, many years. She also spent time raising her four children and went to UNLV where she received her master's degree as well. In 1984, Madam Mayor founded the Meadows School, Nevada's first nonprofit college preparatorial school for pre-kindergarten through the 12th grades. She planned and oversaw the day-to-day operations for 26 years. And in that time, our mayor never took a salary. She retired in June in 2010 from the Meadows, just in time to get sworn in in 2011 as the mayor of the city of Las Vegas. Her predecessor was a, her three-term husband, Oscar. Following suit, she also became a 3P and is currently in her third term. And I do have to brag a little bit because she won her third election by 83.5% of the vote. So among her many, many achievements as mayor, she continually rebuilds our great city and champions the improvement of inner-city schools by pushing for early learning preschool programs, tutorials and ESL students and their parents, and bringing together a coalition of public, private and nonprofit partners to participate in the educational initiatives. It is this tenacious force that we honor today. Mayor Carolyn Goodman is a wonderful friend and companion to her family and friends and is an inspiration and influence on many members of our community. By the end of her tenure, the Goodmans will have served the city of Las Vegas for 25 years rebuilding the greatest city on earth. The Goodman's legacy will be forever appreciated by all Las Vagans. And so our choice of the day, of course, is our Madam Mayor Carolyn Goodman. And also in this month, I know she's already going to kill me, but it's her birthday, so happy birthday to her.
Thank you. So nice. The pictures, I can't tell you.
Yeah, so can we just leave this up for a minute? Tell them, tell them what those pictures are, if you would.
I have no idea where you got the upper left because it shows all the wrinkles, so that one's out. Down in lower left, we were at one of the hotels and that was probably somewhere in the early 70s. Up above left, that was the old, gosh, out there at.
Bonnie Springs.
Bonnie Springs Ranch, both that one, we, I did help them with a brochure and some marketing because I had done that at the RIV. Down, lower left, by the left leg of the horse is, that was our first home, my very first home home. I was raised in an apartment and never lived anywhere else. So that's our home on Viking Road in the east side. And then up in the right corner, of course, is up at Mount Charleston. And you notice our four children are pretty close in height and age. They're 38 months apart and they're fabulous. They all went off for college and graduate school and have come back here to live and are part of this wonderful community. And that's during my time with friends and people in the women's division at the Jewish Federation. And then, of course, I was a passionate, love animals and in particularly horses. And that was a horse moon lad that my husband got from me and how he bribed me to move to Las Vegas. He had won the Futurity at Salt Lake City as a four-year-old, part thoroughbred, part, forgot the other part, a quarter horse. And so I used to just, in those days, there were less than 100,000 people. I boarded him at Flamingo and Eastern. Eastern was dirt road from Flamingo going south and I would spend all day out on the desert just riding. And so what a wonderful memory treat. This city has been so fabulous to Oscar and to me. Never would have had our four children and God bless our city and the wonderful people and friends we've made over these years. Thank you. Had birthdays come too quickly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to look at our missing children right now. We've got Faith Gardner, who's only 15. She's 5'2", she's 130 pounds. She has like brownish hazel eyes. Her hair is brown. She's African-American, Caucasian, beautiful child. And she was last seen in Reno. So if you know where Faith is, please call the Reno Police at 775-334-2175 or Hour and About a Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. And we also have a, another missing beautiful 14-year-old girl, Alicia Witt. She's 5'6", she's about 160 pounds. She's got dark hair, brown eyes, African-American, so pretty. And look at that smile. She was last seen around Vegas Valley in Mountain Vista. She was wearing green cargo pants with a gray zip-up sweater. So please, if you know where Alicia is, please call Metro at 702-828-3111 or 702-458-7009. And you know, I like to always give kudos to our corridor of hope and our homeless success stories. And today we'll be talking about a 63-year-old woman named Karina Warren. In September, the Moore team received a dispatch about Karina Warren. She's 63-years-old woman. She stated that she was living inside her van and that it was not working. There was no air conditioning, no heat, and the windows wouldn't roll down. She reported that she had COPD and other health issues and her family member kicked her out of the housing that she was staying in. So when Mrs. Warren called 211, the Information and Services, she was referred to the Moore Project. And then the team conducted assessments with the client and gathered information to qualify her for the RITA program. Mrs. Warren was approved and she was transported to the RITA program. And prior to leaving the client, we got a lot of donations and we really helped her and she's so thankful. And I'm thankful to our Moore team, our corridor of hope, and everything they do for the people that walk through their door and call them for help. And they are there for them 24 hours a day. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Very touching. Okay, Councilwoman Seaman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first of all, I would like to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. And then on National Mayor's Day, I would like to thank Mayor Goodman for her leadership and mentorship. Thank you. So this week, we're going to talk about getting the word out about your Ward 2 business. Our Small Business Saturdays has become very popular. And if you would like to be featured on my social media channels to get the word out about your business, it's very simple. You just need to contact us at 702-229-2420 or email us at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. We have the Pavilion Center Pool Grand Reopening Celebration happening Friday, April 2nd, noon to 2:00 at the Pavilion Center, which is 101 South Pavilion Center Drive. Come and celebrate our reopening of our newly replastered Pavilion Pool. There will be a DJ and light refreshments provided.
Beautiful.
Then we'd like to invite you to Art in the Park at Bruce Tramp Park, April 17th, from 10:00 to 4:00. We will have jazz music, we will have food, drinks, and it'll just be a great time and we'll get to meet all the artists, local artists here in Las Vegas. So we had a great time at Vegas Strong Academy at Veterans Memorial, reading to the kids. It was a wonderful group of people, wonderful group, tough group. They asked some tough questions, but they are a great group over at Vegas Strong Academy. And I'd also like to say that I'm so proud of the work that Judge Leong is doing and amazing work with Wind Court. I want to congratulate Annalisa and Ashley on their graduation from Wind Court and wish them all the best in the future. It's time to learn about the pets that are up for adoption this week. We have Banjo. He's a male neutered six-year-old, about 89 pounds. Then we have Fiona, female spade cat, around two years old, six pounds. And then we have gorgeous Ollie, who's all set for St. Patrick's Day with that little scarf on. He's eight years old, about 67 pounds. And then we have Haley, who's a female spade, we're not sure of her age, about 11 pounds. There are many other animals up for adoption as well, so we're asking that you contact the adoption department, if you're looking for a pet. Phone number is 702-955-5901, or you can email them at adoptions@animalfoundation.com.
Councilwoman Seaman? Guess what? I know you're such an animal lover. March 23rd is National Puppy Day and I know you're going to do something special, so I just thought I'd share.
Oh, well, thank you for sharing. National Puppy Day. So if you're looking for a puppy, they have puppies as well. They have dogs, puppies, cats, they have almost every type of pet you can imagine up for adoption. So please, if you're looking for an animal, please check out the adoption department. And as usual, if you have any concerns or issues in Ward 2, my amazing staff is going to help you with it. They are at 702-229-2420, or you can email us at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. I know that they're doing a fabulous job because I ran into somebody this week that complimented my staff on how fast they take care of issues. So feel free to call them if you have any issues in Ward 2, or if you have any other issues, we will navigate you to the proper place. Please follow us on social media and be up. Please follow us on social media and be updated with all our events and things happening in Ward 2. At Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, we are at Victoria D. Seaman. On LinkedIn, it's at Victoria Seaman. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Greer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Happy Mayor's Day. Awesome. Metro's Northwest Area Command is hosting a clothing drive for high school students in coordination with Project 150. This program supports homeless, displaced, and disadvantaged high school students. Students receive necessary items needed to be successful in school. You may drop off your donations at Northwest Area Command at 9850 West Cheyenne Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and your support will be greatly, greatly appreciated. Our Northwest Area Command also is partnering with the city of Las Vegas and various community partners to host an Easter Hop, three event at Children's Memorial Park, which is located at 6601 West Gowin Road on Thursday, April 1st, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. If you'd have any questions about this event, you can call my office at 702-229-5443. And I had the honor to do two ribbon cuttings yesterday, just so excited about new businesses coming into our ward, not only to beautify our ward, but to also provide opportunities for work. We had a beautiful new 7-Eleven open at Decatur and Lake Mead Boulevard. And also, the former Seven Seas Restaurant, right in the historic west side, underwent a huge renovation and opened as the West Side Oasis, and it's located at 808 Lake Mead Boulevard. I'm proud to have two new businesses in Ward 5 serving residents, and the West Side Oasis open for lunch and dinner. So please visit their website for more information. And also make sure you stop by that beautiful 7-Eleven on Lake Mead and Decatur. They have, I can attest that they have amazing homemade made cookies there, too. So you will, once you have one, you will not be able to stop. My office is constantly working to provide updates on city services, COVID-19 updates, and happenings in and around Ward 5. If you would like to receive our newsletter, contact my office, 702-229-5443, or you can send an email to tanya@tjackson@lasvegasnevada.gov. Or you can always follow us on our social media channels, on Twitter at CedricGreer, Instagram CouncilmanGreer, Facebook CouncilmanCedricGreer. Have a fantastic day, have a great weekend, and Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, down there to the end, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy Mayor's Day. And want to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day. And I remember growing up, St. Patrick's wasn't always on the forefront of my mind, and I got a lot of pinches in school growing up. Make sure you wear your green. Want to give a shout out to Showboat Park Apartments. On their grand opening, we were there for the ribbon cutting, and it's so exciting to see dignified housing come to Ward 3 and this Gila project by Chi Chi Bengocha and Bentar Construction happen. It's not very often that we have this scope of work happen in Ward 3. We have a newly constructed gated community that features many resort-style amenities like natural grass soccer field, a basketball court, 10,000-square-foot clubhouse expansive pool, or resort-style pool, a yoga studio, and a state-of-the-art fitness center. So if you are in need of housing and you want to check out a really cool place, please go to www.showboatpark.com. And it honors the former Showboat Casino that all of us grew up loving and learning and going to bowl at when we were teens in high school. Upcoming Ward 3 activities, today we have a virtual town hall with Commissioner Sagerblum and Commissioner McCurdy on the eviction moratorium and legal aid. We'll be providing some vital information as this deadline nears, and it will be scary for a lot of families with a lot of questions. So it's really important that we be informed and we know the processes and that we know our rights. So please make sure that you tune in, and we'll also be addressing rental assistance and how we can help our community with that. We're also hosting a shredding event at the Mesquite Club at 702 East St. Louis, and also prescription drug turn-in. This will happen not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, Saturday, March 27th, 10:00 a.m. to noon. I'm also collaborating with the Nevada Hispanic Legislative Caucus and LAKLA, Mi Familia Vota, the Culinary Academy, and others to bring us our annual Cesar Chavez Day. We usually have it at Freedom Park, but because times are still COVID, we have to do a drive-through pop-up and family resource fair. So this will happen Saturday, March 27th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Gary Rees Freedom Park. And want to invite everyone, if you're available, not tomorrow, sorry, on Saturday, March 20th, noon to 2:00, we'll be doing a park beautification and cleanup effort at Myron Levitt, J.C. Park. And as always, register at volunteer@getoutdoorsnevada.org. I also want to invite you to our World Poetry Day Celebration on March 21st from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We're going to be unveiling local poets' works engraved in new Third Street sidewalks between Hoover and Gas Avenues. So their selected poetry by Rel de Truth, Keith Brantley, Ash Delgrago, Flynn Dexter, Bruce Isaacson, Heather Lang Casera, Rodney J. Lee, A.J. Moyer, Kerry O'Connor, and Vogue Robinson will be featured along this Third Street. So come and check out this newly installed piece of art with us. So again, March 21st from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Want to also get on your radar that there will be a spaghetti bowl ramp closure to repair some things, April 9th through the 12th in downtown Las Vegas. So it's super important because it's always nice to kind of know ahead of time so we can plan our routes accordingly. So again, April 9th through the 12th, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., it will be closed. So if you have a shift that takes you places those hours, make sure you use alternate means to get on or off the freeway. I also want to stress that we are temporarily closing some streets, and by we, I mean N.DOT and in coordination with the city and first responders. We want to get your input. What does closing these streets permanently mean to you? And as you can see on the graphics, 7th Street, 8th Street, 9th Street, 10th Street, 14th Street, 16th Street could permanently be closed as long as 21st and 15th. So, so, so important that if you're, if this is not working for you during the temporary closure, that you convey this information. So please call 702-938-5440 and tell them why it doesn't work for you, how it hinders your ability to transit around your house or getting to and from work. You can also share your comments at www.n.dap.com, and there is communications available in both English and Spanish. And as always, my office is here to assist you with any city-related needs. You can always email us, ward3@lasvegasnevada.gov. And stay tuned for all of these happenings on our social media platforms. Olivia Diaz-LV.
Thank you. Councilman Knudsen?
Mayor, thank you for taking, allowing me to take the time to talk about some exciting things happening in Ward 1. In the upcoming weeks ahead, residents in Ward 1 who live near the Rancho Charleston Shopping Quarter will have the opportunity to receive a postcard mailer. On a new initiative we're trying with the local nonprofit Vegas Stronger. The purpose of the mailer is to encourage residents to help our small business owners in the area connect those experiencing homelessness to the right resources needed. I'm confident that when we work together as a community, we can solve our communities' most difficult issues. That includes serving those experiencing homelessness. Thank you to the Office of Community Services, Vegas Stronger, and to the many nonprofits involved in helping us with this effort. My team and I thank all those involved in working together to make life better for those living in Ward 1. And really excited, specifically for my kids, the Springs Preserve is reopening next week, March 19th. As a member of the Board of Trustees for the Springs Preserve, I'm grateful for the many community partners and staff at the preserve working together to make sure a safe reopening is possible. The Springs Preserve is a great place for children in the city of Las Vegas to explore and learn about Southern Nevada's unique desert wildlife and plants in a safe, educational manner. You can start booking to visit at springspreserve.org, and I'll be there this Friday with my kids and some neighborhood kids to help them reopen in the right way. And you can contact me or my team at any time. The information there is my phone number and my email address, and we're always ready to respond to those things that the Ward 1 constituents need. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. And Mayor Protem?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Always right on point. I just love it. Thank you. And so, everyone, this is, it seems that we're on our road back. All I can tell you, the interest out there is unbelievable, and people are so ready. So let's hope we just continue to do what we can to make sure that we get our vaccine, if you choose to have it. And we really are, this city is very, very special. So I want to thank all of our staff, our IT department always for keeping us here, for the great use of this facility during this trying time, our Public Information Office, our Clerk's Office, all of our fabulous, fabulous directors and chiefs and assistant chiefs and Legal Department, everybody. There's just been such an effort and a response. There's such a pride here, I don't know if you can feel it. And the efforts of our city manager, who even if things look insurmountable, he always is so confident in saying, "We'll work with you. We'll try to get this on." And I think that's the attitude we really appreciate, is just not no's, enough anger, enough all of that, but just yes, let's see how we can make these things work for us all. So our next council meeting is April 7th, and we wish you all a wonderful St. Patrick's Day, and don't get pinched, as Councilwoman Diaz will tell you, it's not fun, depending on the pincher. And for the rest of us, have a wonderful weekend, and we look forward to seeing you on the 7th. But you have a dedicated group of council ward council persons that all they want to do is help you and get you through whatever it is you're dealing with, and help you, help this community get bigger and better all the time. And forever, our first responders, and for those who selflessly have been working through this epidemic, thank you very much. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.